...
Here.
Councilmember Sowers, here. Councilmember Joe Brown, here. Councilmember Becky Brown, here. Councilmember Whit, there. Councilmember Escobar, here.
Thank you. I will turn it over to you, Jill, for the telecommunications master license.
Okay, so for this first one, I was gonna have Mr. Kisselman and Mr. Hoffman come up and walk through the study session materials. Essentially, this is to discuss a proposed master license agreement between the city and Mobility for the authorization to place their facilities, known as small cell wireless facilities, in the city right-of-way. And there's some FCC requirements that are pending that we're gonna be talking about tonight. So, a draft of the potential agreement is included. That is not the actual agreement you'll be executing necessarily at this point. So, I'll turn over to Cory and Kent, and they can introduce their guests as well.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen. Actually, the way I think this, we'll try to work this, is Rachel Hanley is here from Mobility. What I'm gonna do is ask her to describe to you essentially what a small cell wireless facility provider is. I suspect that will go a long way towards describing the nature of this proposed agreement. And then, once she's done with that, then I'll talk to you about the draft agreement.
Hello, thank you so much for your time this evening. I am, I work for Mobility LLC, and we are a wireless infrastructure provider. So, what we do is, well, before we, let's talk about the need a minute. Right now, we, as a nation, we are experiencing an increase in data needs nationally. It's doubling every year. And so, our small cell facilities and our wireless facilities are a response to that need. And so, what small cell wireless facilities do is they, it increases the backhaul that, or if you can think of it as, think of it kind of like bandwidth. It allows for us to pick up and carry more traffic and respond to more data needs with a smaller infrastructure than you would traditionally use. As I'm sure you've seen many cell towers around that are massive, and they have lattices and whatnot. The small cell is a response to that, to provide an infrastructure that can kind of aggregate and gather data from people within a smaller area, but then pull it all together so that it kind of hops from one to the next to the next until it finally meets a data hub, which would be one of these larger facilities. And so, that's what we do. And that's, we work with telecommunication providers to meet their needs. And our ultimate goal and where we're headed is to provide, to meet the needs of multiple telecommunication providers. We're working with all four currently, but this project would be geared towards one provider specifically.
So, this is, so like when their bandwidth starts to slow down, you guys pick it up and continue at the same rate? Is that what that is?
So, what it is, is when we come to the city with a proposed plan, and it's based on propagation maps, so it's areas where we know either there's routinely dropped call, or messages where data is, is, we know that it's hard, where we're having, people are having a hard time getting their signal through. Sometimes that's because there's a large number of people, so it's just a dense, a dense area, so it needs, there's a need for increased densification. Sometimes it could just be that there's not really a lot in that area. There's a number of different reasons. But based on those maps where we know that there's poor coverage, we then target our wireless facilities. But it's, it's, those also work with a larger hub. And so, it's somewhat like, it's a little bit like a web, in that, you know, once you have one here, it has to interact with others, and the whole system kind of moves together. It's really fascinating. Talk to our engineers all the time about it. So...
Thank you, Sarah Corn.
No, that's, that's what we're here for.
Marcy.
So, I'm not clear, are you, is it a cable thing? Is it a tower thing? Is it, what is it?
Right. It's a great question. What we're proposing is a wireless backhaul, which is unique and pretty innovative. It eventually does have to hit a fiber hub, which then sends the signals back to essentially the internet. But what we have is a system using, I don't wanna get too technical, but UE relays and sometimes microwaves. And generally, our equipment, it doesn't require, all these small cells don't always require and often don't any kind of fiber, direct fiber line. There are some rare instances where that would be the case, but generally, it's gonna be this wireless system that then passes along from one to the next.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Let me rephrase the question.
Sure.
So, if it's wireless, why do you need our right-of-way? Like, so tell me about the infrastructure side of it. Why do you need us?
Yeah. Well, there's a few reasons. I would say that the right-of-way provides, because it's generally open, it provides an excellent place for us to place our, our equipment, because it provides, there's generally less obstruction for the signal. And also, it's also directly in the area where people are regularly, you know, walking and whatnot, so there's a heavier need within the right-of-way.
Okay. Do we have a picture of what this equipment looks like? What is this? Is this a tower? Is it a big giant obstruction that people are gonna think is ugly?
Oh, so our small cell, I, let me see, Rob, do you have any pictures with you by chance?
Um, I don't. Excuse me. I don't have Rob's.
This is, he's our permitting manager.
Yeah, I've got the same set of plans that he has, except on my laptop. It's a utility pole. There are wooden utility poles here, thirty-eight feet, one's thirty-eight feet, one's thirty-three feet tall. They look just like a wooden utility pole you can see anywhere else in the city. So, they don't have antenna arrays protruding off of them like a, like a monopole cellular facility you've seen around town. They look much more like just a telephone pole. They're low, probably directional antenna on the top. Couple little cabinets mounted to the pole. No ground space is required for cabinets. It's really a low-profile design.
And where would you put it?
So, we have one proposed right now, here, Northland High School out front, just north of the park, on the east side of, by, by First Place, West Front First Place. And then, another one just south here, Community Center Drive, kinda like the Udon's. So, that's the two that we have currently proposed, the small cells.
So, would it be, and so would you propose one in the actual neighborhood, or?
Not yet. We don't have any proposed in neighborhoods, but that's one of the reasons, the, the, the question, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't, Marcy, answer Marcy's question. The right-of-way provides an opportunity to give coverage solutions into residential areas without going on a residential zone, parcel, unless someone's house.
And put in a pole.
Yeah, so, but right now, we don't have any proposed for those areas, it's just the two I mentioned. But that's kind of like why, you know, that's one of the big reasons why this idea of this historical use of the right-of-way utilities.
So, if we agree to do this, would they have the right to go into a residential neighborhood and just crack one?
In the right-of-way, if they show there's no other viable alternatives, and that's one of the ways this is structured, is that the independent, separate, standing pole is the last alternative, is if there are no others. The first option is to attach to another pole, and they have to provide a basis that there were no other poles available for them to attach to.
So, the pole doesn't act as an antenna, it depends on the pole. So, it would be, 'cause I don't know about all the other neighborhoods, in mine, our, our power lines are between the backyards.
Right.
But we do have poles down the street that have lights, lights coming, or, streetlights.
And this only applies in city right-of-way, so it would not apply in the backyards. It would only apply the ones in the streets.
Well, that, that is the city's right-of-way where the poles are, there's that little wall between the backyards, I would imagine.
Right.
Okay.
Kyle.
There are a couple of questions, if I may. Cory, would these cabinets ever attach to any of the city's pre-existing light poles? Is this, would this light?
We don't own, we don't currently own our poles. If we did, the answer's yes.
So, my question is, and I have several, if we end up doing something, let's say, for example, on Civic Center here, and we want to have a special type of light pole to create a downtown feel, let's say, and, and this cabinet that might be attached to it, that, that ruins that, that feel that we're trying to get, what's our, what's our options there if, if they have the right to attach to, you know, a special type of light pole that we're trying to specifically have a feeling of maybe a downtown or, or, you know, older type feeling? Does that make sense, what I'm trying to get at?
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly try to come back with design standards, I guess. I mean, the fact is that we're trying to toe a line, in the sense that the rights-of-way have to be open to these types of facilities. And I can't emphasize that enough.
Is the rights-of-way's open, because I, because I've heard of this before, and you go to like an Old Town Arvada, or you go to another entity where it's like a special district, and I know that, that the industry has to abide by certain rules and potentially is not allowed to, to post on those light poles, and I guess they do the buildings, I've heard, is that correct? Or, or they find another way of, of getting those boxes up?
And so, this has various criteria in terms of available facilities. Presumably, if we owned our own light poles, we could say that our light poles were not available for them to attach to, and they'd have to find a different one.
Okay. Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
Because I am a little concerned, too, about something that I read in the memo, and maybe you can address this, Cory, or Rachel can address this, in regards to the petition that's being filed with the FCC to preempt our authority to regulate these, these boxes or these cabinets. Hearing that, that's, doesn't seem too appealing, that, that somebody's trying to preempt the city's authority. And so, can you explain that a little more? And what's going on with it?
I, I can't explain at the federal policy level. What I can tell you is that that's why this is something we would certainly recommend, is that we're entering into an agreement before, that gives us some flexibility and some criteria before an FCC rule may come into place in the future. The goal, the goal is to preempt the application of any future FCC rule, and have an agreement in place, a master license agreement with this provider.
And if we don't, then, then we're gonna lose our authority, essentially.
We may. I can't, I mean, I can't guarantee we would, I don't, I can't predict the future, but I think this is similar to what other communities have done. We're trying to negotiate an agreement that works for both parties in advance of someone else telling us what the rules might be.
Can I ask the applicant, kind of what the theory behind that is, of why you are taking those steps right now?
So, I would say that a lot of the motivation behind the comments is, you know, there are a number of situations where, take, for instance, fees, where the FCC says reasonable fees, and then we get a broad interpretation of that. And I would say we encounter over and over again situations where it's very much, I wanna say, taken advantage of, where it becomes used as a roadblock, where fees that are just out of control, you know, in the thousands and thousands and thousands, you know. And so, really, I think the, the goal here is, our goal is not to create a situation where we're not working with cities and municipalities, that's not it at all, and I think that would be a terrible, we recognize that'd be a terrible business model. The goal is to allow us to have the benefits of what the federal law really has already in the spirit of it, and what it already provides.
The one thing I would add is that there are obviously fifty different states with fifty different sets of rules. Colorado already has a statute in place for several years that essentially says we do have to make our rights-of-way open to telecommunication facilities.
Is there a fee that we've suggested, or that you guys have been speaking of, because it says TBD in the?
What we were trying to do is track and wait to see what the City of Aurora did, frankly, and track with what they have done. What they have done, it's my understanding as of today, and so this is literally...
We just got the fees. Oh, and I related them to Cory.
It is $200 on a city-owned facility per year, and then permitting fees for when they're located on other, other poles. So, for example, if XL makes their poles available to these facilities, it would be permitting fees. But we, we still need to talk about that, and whether there's some additional permit fee for the work that goes into, even if they're being placed on someone else's poles. Because part of what I think is, hopefully, a little bit different about this agreement is this requirement that Mobility can only put up their own pole if it is a last resort. And that's one of the fundamental, I think, tenets of this agreement that we tried to negotiate over time.
One more question.
Go ahead, Antonio.
Well, I was just guessing, is it a hundred, First Place, Huron? We're talking about the east side of Huron, the high school side of Huron?
I...
Is that correct?
Yeah, one particular location, yeah.
Okay, so, I suppose exists, what you're saying is putting a new pole is the last resort.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, Marcy.
So, just to clarify, the word license and the word permit has been used. Is that an interchangeable use, or are there two different fees?
Two different fees. So, we have a right-of-way permit ordinance currently that they would be subject to. And then, the license fee that's in this agreement in draft form is us giving them a license to attach to our pole.
And is that what Aurora's $200 is?
Correct.
Okay.
I had a question. So, we've talked about two poles, what is the coverage per pole? And then, your thought of, okay, if we do two poles now, is it thinking to cover the city, if that's your goal? How many poles are you thinking, or how many different items?
So, our coverage, I am, it depends definitely on the height of the structure and the buildings within it. But do you have an idea of in a perfect world?
In a perfect world, I think that, you know, these are, these are smaller, but perhaps they're not like a traditional macro, you know, cell site. I think the quartile radius is probably max for those.
Perfect. And, and that can be, our engineers, I've spent a lot of time talking to them about this, it's really interesting, but if they know that there's just an intense need in a very narrow area, they can adjust the size of our antenna to provide even more densification for that smaller range, because it just seems like everyone in that range keeps dropping, or they can broaden it out a little bit. So, there's a little bit of, they have a little bit of give there, but it's based on their understanding from our propagation maps.
Okay, so then you have two locations selected. Are you gonna do a study to see if you need more, or how is that gonna work? Are you just gonna?
Yeah. Right now, we're at two. It's the network's dynamic. There will likely be more, I just don't know right now when and how many. I don't think it's gonna be an overwhelming proliferation or anything, it's maybe another two or three, you know. It's really just expectancy at this time. We could, we could get an answer from our engineering and try to, you know...
Right now, this is our, you know, the two are our focus, and make the need. Thank you.
And actually, Councilmember Sowers, your questions reminded me of a couple of things that I think are probably worth noting. First of all, the way this agreement is structured, so it's a master license agreement, then, if with each location they seek, they have to go through the process. I, I talked about where it is, they show that it's essentially, in my words, last resort, but that there's no viable alternative. And that means there isn't space. XL, for example, isn't willing to give them a spot on their pole, because we can't make XL sublease a spot on their pole. So, we go through that process. Several months ago, this council approved an ordinance limiting the height of CMRS facilities in your right-of-way. This applies to these folks. So, when they're placing facilities in the right-of-way, they're subject to those height restrictions. And in fact, that's one of the things that triggered that ordinance, was that these folks and others were coming in and using rights-of-way only, and there were gaps in a lot of ordinances related to height limitations in the right-of-way. Lastly, Northland's right-of-way permitting ordinance applies to all public property. So, that would include, for example, open space. This is much more limited. This is only the streets. And so, it does not allow for the placement of poles in, for example, open space, park space. It is limited to streets and rights-of-way.
Okay. Thank you. Here.
The memo says that you haven't entered into any agreements in the Denver metro area yet with anyone. So, can you explain where the majority of your business is done right now?
So, I would say we have about five or six that are about to be executed this month in this area. And I know part of the reason that we don't have agreements, some jurisdictions in this area don't acquire agreements, and so there's some of that as well. And so, we're definitely doing work in Colorado. I know a number of jurisdictions have been waiting on the Aurora negotiations, and so, that honestly has been part of the reason, there's been a little bit of a delay. And, but we, we work national, yes, we work nationally, yes.
And if I could, just to expand on that a little bit, the other alternative is to simply go on a permit-by-permit basis. And the city in negotiating with Mobility thought it was a better alternative to have the protocols in place and a master license agreement that gave us more control, kind of at the macro level. So, we had the rules in place each time they came in with a permit. So, that's why Northland has taken this approach in terms of bringing it forward to this point to you.
Okay, Kyle.
You said that you're working with one provider in Northland. Who, what provider are you working with?
Sprint.
Sprint, okay. And then, one more thing. In Section 3, the permitted use of rights-of-way, Part A, regarding the service, it says that you're gonna have access to this pole or to wherever the cabinets are, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, including for maintenance and construction. And we have an ordinance in the City of Northland saying that you can, you know, work at specific hours of the day so that our residents aren't disturbed. And so, I would like to know how that's...
They are subject to that. They are subject to those limitations. They are subject to a right-of-way...
So, that ordinance supersedes this contract?
Correct. There is a police power provision in this, in this agreement that references that.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else?
Just to paraphrase the whole thing, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
And Kyle, she's right, rules, Section 7A of the license, of the master license agreement.
That's a little confusing to me, why that, so, but as long as you say it's that way, then we can work.
Um, go ahead.
Basically, just to paraphrase it down for you, we have to allow this, right?
Right.
Right. There is no yes or no or anything like that. We are basically trying to tie down some requirements for the poles, and we still keep control of this one. That's it. It's not a matter of, are we doing it or not, they're coming.
The, the city has a limited authority to manage its rights-of-way. We are trying to balance the city's ability to manage its rights-of-way with Mobility, Mobility's ability to use those rights-of-way under federal and state law.
All right. I'm guessing that when this comes back, the TBD is gonna show what you're guessing is $200?
Um, yeah, we're gonna still talk about, yes, I'm guessing it'll be 200 on poles that are owned by the city. And again, that's sort of misleading, because as of today, the city doesn't own any poles. And so, that, we need to talk about whether there's gonna be additional fees on top of the existing right-of-way permitting fees for placement of their locations, either on an independent pole or on someone else's pole.
I guess just for me, I just don't wanna see TBD, so I was...
Yes, and that was just because we were waiting to see what happened with the negotiation in Aurora. There is something to be said for not having, discriminating in the fees, and across the state and whatnot. And so, the motivation there was to wait for those fees. Those came out just Friday, but we've been waiting for goodness, a few months, and so it got to the point where, oh, maybe we can discuss with you our project, because we'd like to move forward with it, so, yeah.
Mayor, real quick, can I just ask, are, do you guys plan on expanding outside of Sprint and, you know, going to the other providers or offering service for our residents?
Yes. Well, we currently, as, as a company, work with all four providers in different capacities. Our hope is that moving forward, the way that small cell technology is developing especially, that we begin to, yes, meet the needs of multiple. And so, small cell facilities, I mean, if you think of it like a cellphone, it started out large, remember Seinfeld, you know, the huge phone and whatnot, and then everything has begun to shrink, and technology as it increases, it's gotten smaller and smaller, and that's where we anticipate things going. So, think of this as the beginning of a much longer development in technology. But yes, that's the goal, is to provide needs, for needs more efficiently.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, so...
What I'm ultimately looking for is authority to bring this back once it's been completed in largely this form with, again, the, the license fees clarified without a TBD in them. But basically, conceptually, this is, this is the form of license agreement. We would, we would contemplate bringing it back to if it's acceptable to the council.
Okay. I don't hear any other inputs, so I would, I would think that that would be okay. And then, with the amount, though, I mean, the $200, so... But I do have a question. How, was Aurora that actually came up with the figure? You know, do you know how they, or how did that figure come up?
I don't. I, one of the issues with, with our state law is it does have to be somewhat related to the impacts, you know, in terms of regulating our rights-of-way. There is authority under the law for borrowing that which is done by others. And so, that's why my recommendation was, rather than having Northland do any sort of study on its dime to kind of let someone else take the lead.
That's fine. Okay. All right, then. All right, well, we will see you soon then. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. All right, next we have nuisance regulations. I'm gonna have to spread out.
Do you still have the list of everything that's not a nuisance in front of my house? I wanna make sure.
Well, you know, I was about to give major props to Cory in his office for helping us with this, but being that he got up and ran away, I'll refrain. Also, since Joe, before the meeting, started saying, "Let's keep it to five minutes," I'll try this.
Three.
Three minutes. Before you have a staff memo with recommended policy changes, are there any questions?
There's none.
Is that good?
Okay. There's none.
Joe, is that, is that, is that, did that get there?
No, no, I...
Go for it. Okay. Let's do it.
I have, I have questions.
Okay, let's, let Brooke do it.
Very good. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, before you tonight, we are presenting to you some recommended, recommended changes on a couple of different fronts. One is primarily focused on our abatement process, and the second is focused on reorganizing and trying to streamline our administrative procedures that, as you can tell from Attachment 3, are spread throughout multiple chapters. And so, what we're really trying to accomplish here, on the first part with abatements, is at the, at the advice of legal counsel, is to ensure that we're providing due process when entering onto someone's private property. And so, we have a lot more steps and procedures that are included in this, but we believe that this is actually a better process than what we had prior to. And arguably, with some of the past practices that we had when I first arrived here, I would argue that we definitely need to be moving back over to this side of the spectrum as opposed to where we once were. So, with that, the other, the second part of this is moving with the reorganization. And so, by and large, what you see in bold, or, excuse me, in cap text, is the original policy language just moved. And what you see in cap red text is proposed new language for that. One of the things that we did not attempt to do was to look at each individual policy and say, "Do we need to tweak it?" With the exception of the reds that you see. By and large, the reds that you see is cleaner and more efficient language than what we had previously. So, the idea with that is we're, we're saying more concisely what we attempted to do previously in a better way. So, I'm really talking at a really high altitude here with all of this, and I know that you guys have a lot of questions, but I would suggest that maybe the way we do this is we talk about the abatement procedures first, and if you have questions on that, we can go through that. And if we need to, we can defer to Cory, who is still in the room, if he, if need be.
Okay.
Oh, go.
You wanna do the abatement, or are you...
Well, I'm saying, yeah, I'm opening up to questions on the abatments.
Oh, questions, all right.
Unless you want me to walk through...
Joe, did you have some questions?
You know what? How long have we lived here? Twenty-five years?
In Colorado or in Northland?
No, in Northland.
Twenty in Northland.
No, it's longer than that. Oh, twenty, okay. But anyways, I guess I never read this thing. I never have, because I read just about every rule when it comes to recreational stuff. And that's what, and you know what? And we're not gonna... And we're not going to talk about that now because you and I need to discuss it later because it has nothing to do with what.
No, no, I don't.
But, yeah, yeah, because I have some issues.
Okay.
I was reading this the other day, and I started to get pissed off, and I said, "Okay, well, I don't want to read it anymore." So, but, you know, I've talked to him by my house a few times and hasn't yelled at me about my stuff, but I probably have the right to yell at you about my stuff.
No.
That's good. That's all I'm going to say about that.
Okay. So, do you have a question?
No.
All right. Okay, Mercy.
I don't think I know.
All right.
Let me just clarify one thing on the procedures, because historically, I think there's been ordinances in place, and then there has been policy amendments that code enforcement had. And what this does, I think, is confirms that really everything's in one place, and the Fourth Amendment applies to code enforcement just like it does to law enforcement. So, when you see people breaking down the doors, and you have an unlawful search and seizure, and you talk about violating someone's Fourth Amendment rights, well, the same thing applies if you go onto someone's property and abate a nuisance without proper notice. So, the idea here is to make the most efficient process for cleaning up the city, but if you're going to actually go on someone's property, doing so with a court order, and there's a couple of exceptions, if there's a legitimate emergency, or if there's a legitimate inability to find anyone related to that property ownership, then there's ways to still go on the property. But the bottom line in terms of procedures is to balance the rights of the property owner with the needs of the city to abate nuisances, and I would suggest this makes that balance better for abating nuisances and better for protecting the city and private property owners' rights.
All right. Okay, Kyle.
Mayor, I have several questions, if that's all right.
Sure.
First question is, for these abatement hearings, who will be, who's hearing those hearings? Who will be presiding, presiding over those hearings?
So, we have right now an administrative hearing officer that can, it's a contract position that we have. It's a magistrate. One of the things that we're exploring with this is to have the substitute judge preside over these and not the judge in the event that these become a summons, it makes it easier.
Do we have a substitute judge, Corey?
We do, but the way this is structured, the hearing officer is going to be the exception, not the rule, because most of the time, we're going to be going through the court process, which is the judge. So, that will, and that is, again, by far, the best remedy because it's in terms of finality.
And then, it looks like a lot of the changes are geared towards cars or automobiles or trucks or whatnot from what I'm reading in regards to, to the actual verbiage in the, in the ordinances for nuisances. And so, one of the areas that, I'm all for cleaning up and making sure that we, we have cleaner neighborhoods, but there is one concern in Section 917-6, it's on page 14, it's in red, regarding the parking areas, and it says that they need to be graded and adequate drainage, which is all fine, and hard-surfaced, and, and needs to be approved by the city. And so, my question is, I have friends in the city and even outside the city who will make a P rock or whatever that rock is, that black dark rock for a driveway that they can park their trailer on or whatnot. Are you telling me now for somebody to lay rock in their yard to park their trailer alongside their house or something, they're going to have to get a permit through the city?
So, let's cover that in the second half of this conversation, because the first half I wanted to do is just the abatement process, because we could definitely address that. That's why I got Tom here, because.
Mercy.
I will tie on to that one when you come around.
Okay. All right.
So, is.
Yeah, are there any other questions about the process?
Right. No. Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Going once, going twice. All right, very good. All right. So, your question was basically an approved, on an approved surface for, for that. So, Tom, you want to?
So, we already have adopted an inter-ordinance provision that talks about approved surfaces. May 1st, 2003, I believe it was, was the deadline to convert all new parking surfaces into either cement or brick pavers, something that's, so rock is no longer a ballot, and that, that's been since, you know, 2003, I guess so. But, if you had an existing rock driveway, you could still park on that. So, there's a lot of provisions. All, all this has done is taken the already existing provisions, and instead of hiding it into different areas of the ordinance, structured it so that it's easier to reach. So, for the average citizen, you want to find out about animals, you don't have to go to zoning, you don't have to go to the nuisance regulations, it's all under the animal ordinance.
No, I understand that, but what I'm trying to figure out is, if somebody doesn't want to potentially lay a bunch of concrete, maybe they don't have the money, you know, but they need a place to park their, their RV or their fifth wheel, or whatever they need to do, they have to come to you, to the city to get a permit with whatever they put down to create a hard surface.
At this point.
To park that, that fifth wheel.
At this point in the ordinance, the way it stands, that's not an allowable provision. If it existed prior to May 1st, 2003, I think it is, then it was grandfathered in, but anything past that date, if somebody wanted to create a parking surface, that wouldn't be allowed under the provisions of the ordinance as they exist right now.
So, as of 2003, the only parking surface is allowed is concrete?
Or papers.
Or papers.
Yeah, and so, what we.
Both of those require a permit from the city?
Depends. If it's landscaping, or it also depends on the quantity of, of concrete. So, I believe that under the Milling Code, if it's more than, I think it's, I'm losing my train of thought here, I think it's, there, there is a exception for, for landscaping improvements such as concrete, but in the year, five years I've been here, no one has ever come in and pulled a permit to, to pour a driveway that I'm aware of. It's usually not a permit required unless it exceeds a certain area or quantity. So, I find out what the answer to that is for certain.
I just want to be careful. I don't want to make it harder for our residents to try, if they, if they have, you know, a fifth wheel or whatever they need to park, and they want to try to do it, you know, the right way or a clean way, and it just seemed a little overzealous with this new section about drainage and whatnot.
So, let me just be clear, it's not a new.
It's not a change.
It's not a change.
It's in red.
They're reflecting the fact that, okay, so my question was going to be, are we pulling that away? Because I was aware of the 2003 ordinance. That still stays, that requirement that you can't have those surfaces, so that's already in place, this is just putting it into this spot. It's not changing.
Oh, so it's just, it's just relocating it?
It is an ordinance, plain and simple.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I, I do want to comment on the section that's in red that you're referring to. That's talking about parking lots, so these are commercial parking areas. One of the things we found is that some of the, the old grading, it's over years of, you know, dissettling, and there's all kinds of issues as far as it, cooling in parking lots, degrading. So, this just says, hey, if you have great, if you have drainage, it has to be brought up to engineering standards. So, before, it, there was a very, a one-sentence thing that said, hey, the drainage has to drain away from the property. This says it has to, it has to be, can affect other properties. We're dealing with that, you know, right now with some of our older properties that the, the way the drainage is and the way it interfaces with other properties, it's creating a problem. So, this is, so that's what that wording is, is to protect any new.
Commercial.
Commercial.
Commercial. I understand that, so I think, yeah, it doesn't say anything about commercial, but I understand what you're saying. I just want to make sure that in this process, that we're trying to beautify our city, that we do not, that we don't try to make it harder for people when they are trying to beautify our city. Does that make sense?
Yeah, totally. And I think, I think.
Balance, I know.
To that end, I think that there's nothing that we have proposed here that, that I think substantially alters that expectation.
Perfect.
But I want to make one clarification. If it's in red, it's a change.
That's correct. But this, this, this section is a.
Right, no, I understand, right. Before you made it sound like nobody just moved it, but caps is moved.
Right.
Red is, is new or changed.
Correct. So, yeah, let me just reiterate, is that all caps is new language, all caps black is just language that has been moved.
Right.
Red cap is new policy language proposed. Okay.
So, Mayor, just, just to clarify for the record, so we're not mixing up the two issues here, that what we were talking about with the residential properties was on page 10, that 9-11-28.5, and then the property where we were talking about commercial properties was on page 14, 9-17-6. So, the residential piece is the same as it was in, whenever we changed it, 2003, and then the red is the new to try to clean up the commercial properties, because I know Tom knows this, we go out and it's really hard to enforce when someone has weeds and cracks and everything through their commercial property parking lot.
Okay. Anyone else?
Any other questions on?
Did you say the red was on page 10 for residential?
No, 14.
Page 14 for commercial.
For commercial.
Residential's on page 10. Nine.
It's not red.
No, it's black.
Correct.
No, color code.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't mean to make this complicated, but I'm clearly missing it. I'm going to blame it on the boot truck. So, how did I know that that was, the red was commercial? Tell me where my indicator was, that that made it commercial.
So, I'll, we'll clarify that, but I believe that 9-17-6 is, is a section that covers commercial properties, but we'll, we'll clarify that.
Okay. Yeah, that's due.
Because when we, when we talk about that, we talk about off-street parking.
Somebody else reading it, you get it.
Sure, we'll, we'll clarify it.
Okay.
I think all parking areas is probably.
But you're saying that that section is commercial.
Yeah, we will.
Right, but I, I think all parking areas is probably what triggered you to think that it was commercial.
Oh, yeah, I think that is.
In my experience too, with residential property, putting in driveways and parking areas, the only real issue that comes up is drainage, making sure that you're not draining on your neighbor's property. And usually, it's complaint-based, you're right, people don't come and get a permit for that, so.
Well, the issue is the drainage in that sense, but the other issue is that it is not approved for them to be able to do like the pea gravel and stuff, because that was taken care of in another ordinance, so that's an issue too.
Correct.
All right. Anyone else?
Section 10, page 5, all red.
Yep.
Number 2. Let's just talk about recreational vehicles, we're starting here, they are in red here. So, you can't park a recreational vehicle on the street, let's say a trailer, for more than two hours?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four hours.
That's subsection 2. So, the, the first section, and just to give you a little bit of background on this, the police department got with us in reference to an issue that they were having with people that didn't have the, the means to park their recreational vehicle, vehicle or oversized vehicles on their own property. So, what they would do is they'd park it in front of their neighbor's house or in front of their own house, and the issue that it created was that there was a lot of vision triangle or sight.
Right.
Sight issues with adjacent properties. So, we met with the chief and they said, "Hey, is there anything we could do about this?" This was a ordinance that Denver put in place. We bumped the weight limit. Their, their limitation is 6,000 pounds, and some of your Tahos and vehicles like that exceed 6,000 pounds, so we bumped up the weight limit to 10,000 pounds. But, this kind of solved their problem. There's an issue with people that were taking these recreational vehicles, the police department would tag them, they'd move them six inches, roll it forward, six inches, say, "Yeah, it's moved." So, they needed something to truly solve the problem, and that's where you have the subsection C, I believe it is, I think it's subsection C.
Or 3.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, the whole point behind this is, is to solve police department issue, and they came to us with this, and Corey's speaking about.
Well, I, I just, I just have a concern about this case. I don't have this problem, but some, some people that I know do, is they can't park their trailers on their property or near their property, so they, so they store it. But when big weekends come and up, they'll go up there Wednesday or Thursday to pick up their trailer, and they'll put it in front of their house, plug it in, get the refrigerator going, load it up, stuff like that. And I think 24 hours is a little restrictive on.
Sure.
On instances like that.
Let me speak to that. So, not included in this because it's, it hasn't moved, is there's another provision, which we can bring back and show you, that if you have someone visiting, you can get a, you can get approval to be there for 14 days.
Yeah, I see that in there, but.
Yeah.
So, you would have to get permission from the city, am I correct?
Yeah, and the only reason that we would do that is so that we can track it, so that someone's not trying to game the system.
No, I, I understand that. And I'm not asking for 14 days, I'm asking for 24 hours, you know? Instead of 24 hours, make it 48 hours.
Sure.
Park on the street in front of their house, they're, they're getting ready to rock and roll, you know?
Sure. Does, I mean, does anyone else on council have any concerns about 24 days?
Someone's trying to get ready to go for a normal weekend.
Yeah, I have neighbors that do it all the time.
And I think the HOAs, are you someone in the HOA?
Yeah, but they don't enforce it, because my neighbors have theirs out there before they go out. Yeah, and it's okay. I mean, they're getting ready to go, and then they leave and they take care of everything, so I'm okay with increasing it to 48 hours.
A lot of the HOAs that I live down do the 48 hours, I was just wondering if the 24 was coming straight from Denver's, well, because now their streets are a little bit narrow.
I, I think yes and from PD, just because of the amount of challenges they've had over time with this issue, so.
I'd like to go to 48, if nobody else has any.
Anybody have any issues?
The other thing we also want to mention on this is that part of this provision is also that if, as Tom was alluding to, if someone moves a vehicle six inches before the pass, that would make it difficult for us to force it now, and we're taking that away, which will help us out tremendously.
Okay.
In that other section you talked about earlier, it, it, I think they talked about having recreational vehicle trailers and stuff like that behind the fence, enclosed trailers, open trailers.
Unenclosed commercial trailers, is that what you're?
You're, you're just talking about commercial trailers in that?
I believe so. The, when, when he was talking about the 14-day issue, that's for out-of-town guests that wanted to kind of visit you. So, there's a provision that allows for them to stay in.
To visit.
Yeah, to visit for 14 days, and, you know, with that, they have out-of-state plates, and you can verify it. But, the unenclosed commercial trailers, I think that is.
I realize that statement doesn't work, right?
That.
That if they're, that it only works if it's out-of-state plates?
No. Well, I mean, if, if you can, you know, we go up and talk to them, they say, "Yeah, I'm visiting from Estes Park." Parents are visiting from Estes Park, they brought their motorhome bike, take their.
We don't, yeah, it, it doesn't say specifically it has to be out-of-state plates, it's just.
Yeah, I'm just saying, that's just a enforcement criteria. If we came by and was to see that, you know, okay, we could make the connection that they're out of state, that they're staying there, so it's, with that, but doing some checking.
It's like.
That's okay. I can, I can handle it.
So, the unenclosed commercial trailer?
Well, it's unenclosed or enclosed or covered. But I also.
H2, Part D.
Both in there as well. You can say both. Oh, there we go.
Page two, part D, in caps, above section three.
No, well, you mean multiple, you mean an actual.
Yes.
Trailer trailer.
Right.
Not recreational trailer.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. So, that's clarification time.
Okay. Anyone else?
What's your ask?
We're just looking for council feedback on this. Our goal is to schedule this for first reading at next week's meeting based on what we hear tonight and then try to have this adopted by the June 12th meeting.
Okay. All right. Any other feedback? Something look good?
All right. Thank you.
All right. Chickens and bees.
So, as Becky's coming up, this is really the annual update since you did the licenses. And then also we have one policy item we need some direction on, so I'll look, Brooke, and Becky walk through that.
Should I try the same? You should be able to.
No, it's not gonna work.
It's not gonna work this time yet.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Becky Smith with Planning and Development here to give you guys an update on the bees and chickens. A little over a year ago, you guys passed ordinances to allow the keeping of bees and chickens on residential properties. Since that time, we have issued now sixty-five chicken, backyard chicken licenses. The number's gone up since the memo, and eleven honeybee licenses. I did check in with code enforcement and animal control, and we haven't had any direct complaints regarding these uses. We did have one incident where a chicken escaped and the owner did look to code enforcement to help, but I think that issue was resolved.
Can I just ask a quick question? How do you catch an escaped chicken? Like a net or?
I didn't get into that level of conversation.
I chased a chicken when I was a kid and those things are fast.
You sent my daughter a dog out. Story about it, I'll tell you.
Sorry, I was curious when I read that.
So, we have had a lot of residents that are taking advantage of the fact that we allow these uses now. One thing that has come up, we have received inquiries and questions on if we allow the selling of the goods that are being produced, so eggs. We really haven't received too many inquiries about honey, but I imagine that will just be coming. We looked at the code and there is a section in the zoning ordinance that restricts the sale of merchandise for home occupations. And so, we determined with Corey's help that we cannot allow the selling of eggs or honey or other cottage goods from the home. That said, they could take their goods outside the home to sell them somewhere under the Colorado Goods Act provisions. I did include a hand or an attachment that does a good job at outlining the provisions of what the Colorado Cottage Food Act law is. So, essentially what we are looking for guidance from you guys tonight is would you guys like us to look at amending that section of the zoning code to allow residents to also sell basically goods as identified under the Colorado Cottage Goods Act? So.
You know, it's almost appropriate. I mean, they're already selling these items anyway, so.
Yeah, and then they can get a business license and sell them.
Yeah.
I was just wondering what liability does it open us up to? Does it open us up to any? Because I'm definitely for it too. I think it's the right thing to do since we're allowing chickens and bees, we can't just sell it. I knew you would be coming up for that.
You use that pesky L-word.
No, no, I love that word.
It's not a question of liability. It doesn't open the city up to liability. The issue is that your home occupation ordinance says you can't sell goods from the home. That the evil it seeks to address is more traffic, more delivery, you know, people coming in to pick up the goods, whether it's the honey or the eggs. So, what you would be doing is putting an exception where most home occupations, you can't have customers come. For these, you would be allowing customers.
And I'd only add, the other part of it is that with home occupation, as it's currently written, is that the occupation has to be occurring with inside the house. And because this is licensed for chickens to be outside, we wouldn't be creating a loophole that would effectively allow other home occupations to be able to perform outside.
Kyle?
Mayor, I just wanted to give you guys kudos for implementing the program. It seems like it's been a pretty smooth process thus far, and I think that the way staff approached this from the very beginning and brought it to the community, I think definitely has made this whole process the, how smooth it has been. So, one question I do have, or a comment, I guess, is I did look over the paperwork you attached for the Colorado Cottage Food Act, and it's really, really interesting and neat, something I didn't even know about before. One thing that it does talk about in regards to liability, Carol, is they have to go through a class, a food safety class, which I think is definitely, and that's something that's required by the state. Is that correct? It wouldn't even necessarily have to be written in our ordinance. That's just a state requirement? Correct. Okay. And so, I'm definitely all for it. I think that it's not gonna change the amount of chickens or the amount of hives that we're allowing. It's just going to allow them to sell their eggs or excess eggs or excess honey or whatever they want to do. And so, I'm all for it, but thank you to staff for making this whole process.
I personally would like to see us expand past the chickens and eggs. I get a little confused because sometimes we're talking about expanding, you know, about chickens and eggs. But I'd like to see it expanded because I think we've all seen the home-based businesses that are advertising through social media and selling their products already. So, how would we go about that? Or is this portion evidence?
So, are you referring to other types of goods?
Yeah, like the lady I bought my cake from.
Okay. So, we will be taking that on through the update of the zoning code.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Anyone else?
Marcy, please, more just kind of a little comment. You know, we are coming up on a year on it, and I think it would be great. We're always looking for ways to get more engagement on our social media and get people interested. If any of the sixty-five and eleven would be interested in just sharing a little bit about their experience or kind of maybe have a picture with their kids and their chicken, I just think, you know, they're gonna share it and they're gonna pass along to their friends and they're gonna be like, oh, this is a cool thing Northland's doing. So, I would just love to see if we could just a minute and do a couple of social posts with them.
Yeah, we could definitely reach out to the contacts that we have on the licenses. We had a couple of people reach out to us to see if they could directly reach out to someone that's already beekeeping or chicken keeping so that they could learn more about the process.
We can help the community there.
Contacted.
Becky, do you have something coming up tomorrow?
Yeah. So, the Hill Committee is sponsoring Urban Agriculture Series, and we've already held our beekeeping class and our gardening class, and tomorrow night is our backyard chicken keeping class. So, that'll be at the rec center at 6:00 P.M.
Nice plug.
I would just like to add one thing. I think that I never said to council after Fox Run took the vote as to whether to allow them or not, and it was a definite no in Fox Run. So, they didn't want to allow chickens or bees, and it was about seventy percent against, thirty percent for. So, that's kind of where it came out. But in an area of thirteen hundred rooftops, the voting numbers were about two hundred and seventy-six against to about a hundred and six for. So, that's, you know, that's the amount of return responses we got on the ballots. But anyway, so it was turned down in Fox Run.
That's through the HOA, right?
I think that's unfortunate, but.
But now they can do it.
If it comes and you could point to the number of things we've had.
The HOA, you mean?
Yeah, so our policy, yeah, our policy requires that the HOA has to allow it.
I didn't realize that. Okay.
That's too bad.
So, we would be looking for a direction to go ahead and move forward with an amendment to the policy to allow for that within the code.
So, I have a off-the-wall question, since I don't raise little chickens or anything like that. But I do, I've been given, you know, eggs, and the ones that I get, now this is really off-the-wall, they're pastel colored. Is that the way this happens? Because I am very naive about this. I'm going, I mean, they're, is that true? They come in?
I don't know.
They're not white, right? Yeah.
Each breed has its own.
That's right.
So, I mean, this is serious. I mean, you know, because I opened these up and they were pink and green and yellow. I'm going, holy cow, you know?
Those are peeping roofer.
Yeah. All right, Joe. All right, that's all.
So, the consensus is to move forward?
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure. You got it on the?
I really was wondering if somebody had taken time to do something with these eggs.
Some unbranching.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't know. All right.
All right. Coming up is Eric Genze, and we also have Alan Seal who's working on this. I did not realize that Eric, this is his first time in front of you guys. Eric is our senior planner who is helping us with current planning. He's involved with Marketplace as well as a lot of the redevelopment projects, and he's also our lead on entitlements. So, we're very fortunate to have Eric. Eric is the lead on updating the zoning code, and so I just want to kind of give a proper introduction. Eric, you guys have already met Alan. He did this up here on presentation. So, they're gonna be the primary folks working on this, and obviously this project is a department-wide effort. So, Becky, myself, and Ashley, who you've also all met, will all be participating and helping with this process, but these are the guys that are gonna be the frontline for this project moving forward. So, with that, I will hand it over to Eric.
All right.
Well, good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. The intent of this item this evening is just to provide you all with a project update on the zoning ordinance rewrite and kind of where we're at at this specific point. We've also had previous discussions similar with the Planning Commission to kind of get them on board as well, and we'll be kind of moving this project forward in the future. I just will have you guys know that staff and Clarion's very excited to proceed here with this project and to kind of get it back going again after being dormant for about a year. So, we'll go ahead and just start here with a little bit of background as to where we've come from with this project to this point. In 2015, you all may recall that Clarion Associates was awarded a contract to kind of initiate the revisions to both Chapter 11, which is the zoning ordinance, and Chapter 12, which is the subdivision regulations, and kind of combine those into one document. That document would be referred to as the Unified Development Code. Unfortunately, back in 2016, you know, this project was put on hold partially because of staffing issues, but also because of other departmental obligations within the Planning Department. Now that we're fully staffed here in the Planning Department, we're able to re-initiate this project. So, just to let you know, we did meet with Clarion Associates about a month ago to kind of discuss where we were at, where they think that we were at, where the remaining scope of the work, the revised timeline for this project, and how we can actually move this project forward to completion. The staff memo that we provided for you did say September adoption. That's not entirely true, however, as you look at the schedule in the back, we anticipate getting the final version from Clarion in October of 2018. But what that means is that we would then need to proceed with the public hearings, the required public hearings for adoption. So, I wouldn't expect until probably about November of 2018 that we'll probably see, be able to get through all those public hearing processes to get that adoption taken care of. But I just wanted to point that out. So, it looks like November of 2018. The proposed scope of work is what it was. There's really not much change to the proposed scope of work, and we provided that as part of your exhibit, just so you can see. That's from the actual contract that was prepared and approved by council. I have attempted to kind of summarize briefly in the staff memo kind of what those various phases look like. I won't go into detail with that unless you have any specific questions on those. But really, there's gonna be three modules that we'll be working through. The first module will be basically administrative procedures, and the second module will basically be delving into the various zone districts as well as uses permitted within those zone districts. And then the final, the third module, will be basically going over various development standards, which can range anywhere from architectural guidelines to parking, to setbacks, to landscaping, to all of those issues. So, we'll look at those as part of Module Three. And all of those modules together will be presented as the Unified Development Code. So, that's the big document that you'll be seeing at the end.
So, Module Two is where we'll cover home occupation, the conversation that we had last year regarding accessory dwelling units, those type of policy changes and innovations that we've heard from council that we will be proposing with that. That'll be a big part of that.
And each of those modules will be presenting to a number of groups that are gonna be involved in this process. The first group is a task force committee. This task force committee consists of two members of council, two members of the Planning Commission, two members of NERA, one person from the business community, one person from the development community, and then a community member themselves. So, hoping to get kind of a broad spectrum of input on this. The task force is intended to kind of be the first sounding board on these various modules and a big discussion, you know, a big group that will discuss various issues that we need to address through these various modules. And the intent is for that group to meet before the draft is brought to the Planning Commission and the City Council. So, we hope that that group will be able to kind of hash out some things, get things resolved before we're bringing it forward for discussion, kind of at the higher level at Planning Commission and City Council.
Mercy?
So, you know, we already had a task force.
It's the same.
Okay. Well, I guess.
With the.
Changes of council.
That's right.
Because Gene was on there and then you were on as planning.
I was on as planning commission, but I definitely might be on the House Council.
So, what we have at the end of this conversation is a conversation about the composition of the task force because we have council, Planning Commission, history here, and we want to clarify what the expectations are, so.
My question was, I just kind of feel like we had some of those business partners that were already part of it, and I just kind of hate to let that go because they put a lot of effort into it. So, I just want to make sure we weren't starting fresh or at least not.
No, we're not.
Bringing them back.
We're reaching out to those people who were involved in the task force previously, yes. Hoping that they'll be still interested.
Yeah, agree.
The second group that is involved is the Planning Commission. They'll be bringing forward a recommendation to you all for consideration. So, just so that you know, the Planning Commission's meetings will take place, their recommendations or each module review will take place as a joint study session with the council. And then obviously, the third group would be you all as City Council and those who will be making the final decision on this ordinance.
Is the cost still the same?
I'm sorry?
The cost?
The cost has not changed. Right.
One of the things that we're gonna be doing, which was part of the original scope, is that in terms of timeliness and also efficiency is that the Planning Commission will be invited to the council study sessions for the module reviews so that they're here and at the same time you are in being able to provide input at that point.
Good idea.
Mayor?
Yes.
Good question. So, Eric, and I know you're a little newer, and so maybe Brooke can answer this question. I'm not quite sure. And pardon me, hopefully this doesn't come across as rude or anything, but we started this process in the spring of 2015, got halted in the spring of 2016. So, one year went into it, and now we're being told, and I've said this before, it's coming back to, it's gonna be completed in October of 2018. And I'm looking at the tasks here, tasks A through G on page eight, I guess that would be, or five. And you're talking about efficiency. What the heck is taking so long? I mean, how many pages is our zoning code?
It's over a hundred.
So, over a hundred pages. And you're not changing every page, I wouldn't imagine. It sounds like you're trying to add some stuff, maybe, you know, redo some of it so it's not from scratch. I'm just, I'm a little set back by how long this is taking and how long it's gonna continue to take. And looking at the tasks, it doesn't seem, and I'm not, believe me, I'm not a senior planner or anything like that, but just from a residence viewpoint, it doesn't seem like it should have taken this long or should be taking this long. Can you explain that a little bit?
Sure. Part of the timing issue here is that in the spring of 16, I went to the then-city manager and said that there was too much on our plate and said that if you add one more thing, we're not gonna be able to meet our expectations on deliverables. And a lot of those were based off of the February retreat in 2014 that we were trying to do. And things like chicken and bees and other things that were asked of us took an enormous amount of staff resources when we were short-staffed. And then we had an issue with staffing in which we had turnover and then attempted rehires where we were unsuccessful. rehires where we were unsuccessful. And then, we moved, as we were moving forward, one of the things that became very apparent to me as the director is that we had Planner Two positions that were the open positions that we had. And it became very, very apparent to me that a Planner Two is not the right position to manage a project this complex. So, we had to go through a process to request to get those positions reclassified, which is what, one of the first things that I asked Jim to do when he became City Manager, so that we could get the right staffing level to be able to manage the project. To your question about the timing and why it takes so long, I think one of the things that with any zoning code process, especially when you start talking about individual per people's rights and what they can do, you want to make sure that you're reaching out to the public and you want to make sure that the public understands what you're doing because if you don't, you will have a lot of people at council meetings wanting questions answered. One of the things that I have experienced over my career, and this has actually happened early on when I was here, is when we first did the sign code, we said, hey, we should have a task force. We want to involve those stakeholders that are most affected by it. The comment that we got from council was, is you're the subject matter experts, just go do it. We want it done quickly. We went and did it and the folks that were impacted by it hated it. And we were then directed to go back and revise the sign code. And then, we had Reed versus Gilbert, which we then had to go through and do that. Part of what we built into this process, absent the logistics of planning operations, was to ensure that we have a public process that creates buy-in and also education at the same time. As you all saw with the hearing, the public hearing case last year on the duplex, what was very interesting to me was is that the residents weren't necessarily opposed to it, but they wanted to have a public forum and a public process to be able to discuss that. One of the things that we have in the scope of work right here is what we call subject matter issues, that we have special breakout sessions that we would have that would engage the public on those issues. And I think you talked about home occupation, we've heard a lot about accessory dwelling units. There's a number of other planning tools out there that we aren't necessarily utilizing. So, to the extent of cleaning up the code, that's one of the primary things we want to do because obviously, this is what we call a greenfield code. It's basically for a city that has green development. In other words, there's open land, we're now an infill community, and so we need to work towards that.
And I understand that, Brooke, but I'm doing the math here. And you already have one year of work into this from spring of 15 to spring of 16, is that right?
We award the contract in the spring of 15, but much of the work that we put together, which is Module One, which we now have teed up for the first public meeting, which you guys will be July 17, so we have scheduled. We have that portion teed up. And that is essentially done.
I just hope you can understand the frustration because that'll be two and a half years' worth of work for that and a total of three and a half years if you count the break that we took. And so, that's a long time.
Well, let's also keep in mind that there was also the Phase One evaluation, which was the technical assessment that we did as well.
So, I'm just.
Sure. Put it out there.
Marcy.
So, maybe I could just add a little bit and correct me if I say anything incorrectly, but I think it might be helpful, especially for some of the folks who are new on council, to be able to see some of the work and documentation that we did as a task force. And hear me, I'm just frustrated that it's taken so long. But I can also speak to the amount of work that has gone into it and that while it seems like it's just 100 pages, the technical assessment that was done and went through really evaluates how many problems there were in it and that it's really a restructure. So, it's not just reading line by line and kind of just making tax changes, kind of like we did with the nuisance. It's like completely redesigning it too. Because if you look at how it looks now and how a proposal was, it's not user-friendly for the residents at all to read through it. And that was a big part of it. There's language and wording that was complicated, there's some things that needed and we're proposing to have more visual elements to it as well. So, thinking about how we did the sign code, I just think that there's, it is a lot more work than simply that we're looking at changing wording and rewriting. So, I just want to be clear with council that it's not a simple process. As frustrating as it is, and I certainly am, because really, it's probably like more like we'll approve it and then it'll be a 2019 release and implementation. And so, that's frustrating. But I also think when you start reading it and you look at it and the gaps and the holes, probably something that we're just going to have to tough out.
Thanks for that input, Marcy.
I would just add from my personal experience, when I was the planning manager with Adams County, we rewrote the zoning ordinance, zoning regulations in that case, and subdivision regulations. Then, we did the engineering standards at the same time. And you're right, it was a wholesale rewrite in that case. We had not had an update since 1980 and it took us almost three years to complete that.
I was wondering that.
Right, right. And so, when I was talking to Brooke about this, I was wondering if there could be some overlap of the modules. And the challenge with that is we tried that again in my prior experience when I was doing this, and the Planning Commission, the elected officials of the community got confused because we were trying to bite off too much at one time. And so, I was convinced that by breaking it up this way, we can kind of sequence it, get things done, mark them complete, and then do a full adoption at the end.
All right. Anyone else? Thank you.
All right. Just a few more thoughts, finishing thoughts for you all here. Brooke kind of alluded to it, but there will be points throughout this process where we are going to go out and engage the public, whether that be just the public in general, specific neighborhood groups, business, the business community for certain issues. We may have to go out and talk to them about various issues that come up. And some of those topics, you know, maybe accessory dwelling units, maybe what land uses are permitted in certain zoning classifications, you know, different performance standards, like maybe we want to have more architectural standards than what we do now. I mean, some of these things will be up for discussion and debate and discussion with the community. So, those will be various points throughout the process as well. Now, in terms of where we are now, we have conducted a review of Module One. Staff has provided our comments among, along with the city attorney's comments on Module One. So, we're waiting to get those back. We are hoping to have a meeting with the task force the beginning of June. So, we're hoping to get comments back and get those, the Module One out to that task force so we can at least begin, start talking with the task force. And then, July 17 is when we're planning on the City Council, joint City Council, Planning Commission study session. So, that's all I've got this evening for an update. If you have any other questions, we'd be happy to answer.
So, then the last part we want to talk about is because of the overlap that has been created with Antonio once being a planning commission member and appointed as a planning commissioner and now a council member, and Becky being the ex officio now for the planning commission in Marcy's role, we want to make sure that we have some feedback on who from council wants to participate on the task force and try to get some direction from that. Because I think what we would probably have to do is, if I'm not mistaken, we have to do a formal amendment or a formal appointment for that. Is that correct? I can't remember.
Yeah, we could do that at the next meeting. I think the big distinction there is if two council members are there, then we don't have to post the task force meetings as necessarily as public meetings. Not to say that the public isn't welcome to come, but we don't have to do the formal notification process. So, much like the Legislative Committee, Finance Committee, et cetera, if we have three council members on, we'll just have to post those as regular public meetings. Three or more council members may attend.
Ex officio, got it.
Yes.
Got it.
So, are we fine with having three? Because I don't want to back out if that's what you're asking.
It's all up to you, really. If you want to have three of you on there, that's entirely fine. It just kicks in a notice provision that we'll have to adhere to.
And that's simple to do. I mean.
Yeah, it's not a logistical concern for us.
Okay.
Well, I think the grid is a little serious that we want to stay on.
I kind of feel like my effort in the beginning part, I kind of want to see it out.
Antonio, you still want to stay on?
Is that right to continue the work?
And Becky wants to stay on, so I think that answers your question.
All right, great, thank you.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions?
I don't hear any. Thank you.
How do you get your hair to look so pretty?
I use pomade.
Well, the one question that's all they think of you. Yes.
Well played, well played. Thank you.
All right.
Trauma, Justin.
So, Brooke's son neighbor's still doing that thing?
Yes. I have, I've got some printed material information that I've.
I'll stop by.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I just want to figure out what time.
Okay. I think it's 11:30, but I'll check. All right. Okay.
All right.
Jason, capital project financing.
So, as Jason comes up, I wanted to let you know, just kind of some foreshadowing of how this memo evolved over the last six weeks or so. If you recall, when you adopted the Civic Campus Master Plan, we committed to come back to you within 60 days with some initial financing scheme, if you will, how we would get Phase One implemented. And so, we meet every Thursday after our regular executive DRC meeting, roll up our sleeves and try to figure this out, a lot of whiteboarding, et cetera. But we thought it would be beneficial to not just talk about the Civic Campus, but really to at least hit some of those priorities that you mentioned at the retreat because they are all interrelated into how we fund these things, whether they be the wastewater plant, roads, the four-mill extension that we could be asking for this fall. And so, that's what the result of all this was here. And so, there's that table in the back that kind of shows how all this pieces together here. So, I'll let Jason take the lead on walking through this and then Amanda's here as well as Brooke, as well as Mr. Willett and Debbie were in this process as well, they're not here tonight, but they were, we're representing them. So, I'll kick it over to Jason.
All right. Good evening Mayor, council members. So, again, as Jim mentioned, you know, this is really just a summary of some of the larger capital financing plans that we've, you know, outlined, really beginning February 11th at the retreat. So, nothing should be unfamiliar, they should all be very familiar items that we kind of walk through. So, we're going to touch on, you know, marketplace redevelopment was a top priority, the Civic Campus, Huron Street and kind of road projects in general, and then the wastewater facilities. So, we've been working internally as, you know, staff as a team, and we've been strategizing as well with outside consultants. We worked on the Justice Center, Stiefel Consulting, Cootec Rock, our bond counsel, and then with Stan Tech, our utility consultants. So, this has been a collaborative effort to come up with some strategies that we want to bring forward. So, on the first item, the marketplace, as you know, it's up for sale, under contracts, going through that process. It's really a reactive situation for the city since we need to form a partnership with whomever the new owners are going to be. And until we know who those new partners are, it's obviously a little bit of a challenge to finalize or even really kick off any discussions about any financing or plans that we'd have for the redevelopment. Now, with that though, we wanted to summarize that, you know, the likelihood of, you know, supporting that project would be from urban renewal dollars that we have, and then we're familiar with our sales tax incentive program, that's kind of an enhanced sales tax and some shared back program. You know, two major projects that the URA and council have been discussing for a while is the 104th I-25 landscaping, that would obviously add value to that project, and then the pedestrian bridge across I-25. So, those are some things that are kind of ongoing and don't necessarily require, you know, the partner to be involved in at this time. So, each one of the recommendations and areas, we pointed out alternatives and risks, you know, for the marketplace specifically, you know, an alternative to using URA dollars and any type of incentive program would be just to not participate in the redevelopment. We always have that option. And then, of course, the risk of, you know, not being an active partner in the redevelopment would be, you know, the market would support what happens without really being able to have any influence by us locally for the redevelopment. So, not fascinating risks and alternatives on that one. I think that it's a top priority and we'll be willing, enable, and we'll hopefully, you know, have more information. It's actually changing basically almost day by day, you know, with the ownership and such. So, but when we prepared this memo, you know, and we're still kind of at the same point that we're still kind of waiting to see who's going to be the new owner.
I would add that we, although we've not done anything necessarily with the new owner, we're trying to be proactive in terms of kind of getting our ducks in a row because one of the questions that came up at the NURA retreat is what's the vision for the property? Well, we're not really sure because the private sector's going to probably tell us first. But what we want to do is be prepared with, I think the working title is a white paper essentially, that would outline what incentives do we have available? We're looking at the utility study in more detail because that was just recently completed, and trying to identify where potential investments of NURA dollars may occur so that if they come in and have a specific ask, then we can, you know, evaluate that against what we think our incentive package might be. So, we are kind of reacting, but we're trying to tee ourselves up so we're ready to react, I guess is the way to put it.
Jim, what's Park Hill saying or is that something that we have to discuss in executive session?
He's involved in the preparation of those documents at this point.
Okay. But I'm curious, it's coming to us and the dollar amounts are blank or, you know, and I know Park Hill was brought in in regards to incentives and what's going to be attractive so that we can, you know, have, you know, achieve our vision for the property, what the city vision is for the property. And I'm curious if there's been that discussion with Park Hill and what those incentives might look like and the dollar amount that might be attached to those incentives.
Yes, we, he attended a meeting with us a couple of weeks ago and we rolled up our sleeves and tried to outline some of those things. I would say he hasn't put forth much effort towards his contract at this point because he's kind of waiting with us to work on this white paper. And then, he'll be at the table with us when the developer comes in with their ask, helping us look at pro formas, and also looking at the market reality of what they're proposing as well and trying to give us some insight on there too.
So, we have really no idea on dollar amount incentives, anything like at this point?
Well, we know what NURA's funds are and what need to be committed. But yeah, the rest of it would probably be more executive session discussion.
Were our incentives in any way involved in the negotiating at this point of picking the final buyer of the property or developer?
They are not. In fact, when we were asked, Debbie was asked specifically at the start of their process to sell the property, they wanted us to give them a dollar amount of what we'd be willing to put in and we were not prepared to do that.
So, is there any other comments on the marketplace? Maybe we can go back to it, but we can keep moving along?
Did we just have to?
That was a lot of to be determined, so there wasn't a lot of analysis there to dig through. So, in April, council, you guys approved the Civic Campus Master Plan as part of the city's comprehensive plan. This item number two, we've outlined financing plan to basically build Phase One of the project, which includes a recreation center, the senior center, and the theater. Probably just refer to it as the Rec Center, but note that it refers to all three of those. I couldn't come up with a name to summarize all those, I'm going to call it a Rec Center. Unless anybody else has a name that we'd like to call it, to know that it's all encompassing. So, and that also identified significant infrastructure-related costs for a festival drive space and then future private development elements as well.
Jason, is that infrastructure cost the entire campus then?
No, that's just for the first.
Or just what's related to? Okay.
Yeah, just for the first phase.
Although, it's probably 80 to 90 percent of the total, right?
So, that makes a difference to me, I think.
Yeah, it's, the challenge with, as Jason's looking that up, in building the Recreation Center complex, we'll call it, is you basically have to put in, number one, all the drainage and you have to put in all the water and sewer up that main paired one-way street, the plaza area to serve it. The things that you probably, we would not need to put in yet would be probably things between here and the promenade because those could be phased in later when private development occurs. And then, probably some of the water and sewer things to the south of the main area where the city hall is right now. So, but the bulk of, number one, all the drainage for sure, and most of the water and sewer would need to go in.
Yeah. So, if you include infrastructure and landscape, which is generally what we did on the infrastructure piece, there's, Phase Two has another $5 million of that, so.
Jason, not to jump up, but just. Jason, not to jump up, but just, you're going to be talking about the four mills in the next paragraph. When you're talking about construction of roadways and infrastructure on the Civic Center, can those four mills be used for that construction, for the roadways at least, of this property?
Yeah, the four mills is restricted for roads and road reconstruction.
So, that could potentially help out with the roads on the Civic Center? It could be a funding source for that?
Yeah, potentially. We'll lay out...
No, it's correct. It's factually correct. It's just, we identified different uses for those monies.
Well, and that's why I'm bringing it up, because if there are different uses for those monies, I feel like that should be in a discussion, because I know that, and I'll talk, yeah, and I'll talk more about what I want to say.
Okay, okay. No, that's fine. And then, also just on the next page, on page two, just an update, an RFP for the facility program and staffing assessment for the Recreation Center was released April 21st. There's a previous bid meeting that was held on May 1st. You know, those proposals are due next Tuesday, so May 23rd. And then, this is something that we had already talked about with the outreach. So, the timing on that would be maybe award the contract as early as June 26th, which we can discuss more as we kind of go through the financing plan. But I wanted to provide an update on that, since that was something that we talked about at the last meeting. Just getting the public outreach kind of teed up and ready to go.
Carol.
Was 13 attendees a good number, a bad number, expected number? Seems like that's a great project, so a lot of people would like to get on.
I think that was actually a good number, and there's some certain players involved, I think, and the major players in the area all attended. So, from different disciplines, architects and facility groups and things like that. So, yeah, it was, 13 were a good representation. So, as far as the financing of Phase One, you know, we've identified a project budget attentively, and this is through discussions and looking at our current reserves, our annual revenues. It's kind of summarized on the back page. About $40 million, not about $40 million, you know, for the design, the building construction costs, the FFME, and $13 million set aside for the infrastructure. The approach would be to use $13 million of one-time reserves to pay, to cover the infrastructure costs. And then, that would really allow for $40 million to be financed, much like the Justice Center, through a certificate of participation for the remainder of the, you know, what we actually see, you know, not the, the infrastructure isn't the fun stuff, in my opinion, but it's very necessary, of course. Alternatives to that plan, you know, we could invest in Phases One and Two. Phase Two, if you recall, rounds out some of the infrastructure, parking lots, landscaping, and then includes the city hall. So, currently, the plan, you know, calls for Phase Two to begin around 2026, and that estimated cost is $18 million. So, an alternative would be to see to roll, roll Phase Two into Phase One, or expedite the timing of that in some manner. Other things that we want to do, obviously, is complete the public engagement before, you know, we get too far down the road and kind of identify what the feedback is from the community, and that's through the RFP that has been already released and due next week. And then, as always, there's, you know, have council direct us to look at all other alternatives for funding the projects. Some of the risks with pretty much any project, you know, it would delay the timing for maybe the second and third phases, inflationary pressure on construction costs, you know, future phases. So, Phase Two relied in the master plan on some private development, you know, coming forward and providing additional revenues to help fund. So, that's a risk as far as waiting. And then, obviously, the ongoing maintenance and operational costs are a risk as well, when we look at, you know, we have funds dedicated for capital projects to really build facilities, and then where do you identify those funds to actually operate them? So. Did you guys want to talk about this, I'm assuming in a little bit more detail?
Any questions?
You guys have questions coming?
I could see you wanting to say something.
So, I think that two things for me on this one is, City Hall is an important one for me, and I think there's a couple of things for that. I think we always talk about the expenses here at City Hall in maintaining it and keeping it up, and we talked about heating, we talked about fire sprinklers, I mean, just a whole gamut of things here. And I also, well, I love that we got the PD in there. I also kind of feel like the staff is forced to endure the building, and I hate to think that they'd have to do it past 2016. I think it's really important to me, and I don't want to see us spend a ton on the retrofitting down here, but I don't want to see us forcing our staff to use the lower level in ways that just, it's just not appropriate for them. So, I think that's an important one, so I think somehow I want to see that happen. But, the thing I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around is the funding between being able to pay for this project alongside the COP, the funding to the Justice Center. And I think for me, I just kind of need to see it side by side. I don't know what that looks like, like seeing, here's what the finances are that we're putting over to the Justice Center, and here's where the finances would be if we were to do the Civic Center Master Plan, and how we could really afford to be able to do both of them. I feel like I need to see that. And I know it's kind of been presented, but I'm just having a hard time visualizing how that affects our budget, and would we be able to do it?
On a building the projects plan, or from an operational standpoint? A little of both?
Maybe both.
Okay.
Certainly getting me there to the project.
Yeah. So, if we go to the page four, and then I can kind of walk through that, and hopefully that will help a little bit.
Okay.
So, in that first gray box where we identified, so number two, Civic Campus, Phase One, we've got a total project budget of $53 million. So, in, I guess, the middle column kind of says annual revenues, to identify available sources on an annual basis of the capital half percent sales tax. So, that capital half percent sales tax generates $2.5 million, and $1.5 million of that is now paying for the Justice Center. So, we have the million, so we have $1 million left over of that revenue source. The 2% marijuana tax, special tax, generates a little over $500,000 for these purposes. We rounded to $500,000. And then, currently, we have a general fund transfer of the $1.7 million that we've done in 2016, and we have budgeted for 2017. So, that total available is about $3.2 million. The estimated debt service for the $40 million for kind of the COP portion of the recreation facility would be $2.7 million annually. So, we have available sources of about $3.2, and we're, you know, the recommendation coming forward is to use about $2.7 million of that. Again, we have to think about things that we can't predict in the future, other needs in the community. We have to allow for changes in the economy to be able to meet those needs. So, we allow for a little bit of, I guess, cushion, if you will, with that project. So, we've got the $1.5 for the Justice Center, then this $2.7, leaving about $500,000 of those sources. And then, in the column to the right of that, one-time reserves, that half percent sales tax, fund balance, right now is $11 million. The marijuana tax has about $1.6 million. And then, the general fund transfer, at the end of this year, will have roughly about $3 million available. So, a total of $15.6 million. And then, the recommendation is one-time reserve to cover those infrastructure costs for Phase One of $13 million, which would leave about $2.6 million in the fund balance of those one-time reserves.
Is it...
Does that help, maybe?
And to clarify, this does not touch the general fund reserves?
Right. This is just the capital projects fund reserve. So, this, yeah, this is not touching the 88 or so percent general fund, fund balance.
So, you don't have the money essentially, with these numbers, according to my calculations, to do the Phase Two, to pay for the financing of Phase Two immediately? Because another $20 million financed would be half of what you have there, so another $1.3 million, let's say, and you only have $500,000 available on this sheet?
Correct. We were trying to solve for Phase One first, because we made one big assumption. Even though the master plan talked about private development offsetting some of those costs, we made an assumption, no private development in Phase One. So, no offsetting revenue from selling land?
So, your $18 million estimation, that doesn't include any potential private development offset? Or is that...
That's just, that's just a cost figure. It doesn't have a revenue associated with it.
Yeah. So, part of the Phase Two piece would be either new revenues come in to allow, you know, to fill that void, or there would be some, you know, and private development might assist with that. So, but that's the unknown right now. And that was, you know, kind of the unknown in the master plan was to say, here's how we can get Phase One done, and then what does the second phase look like?
So, in your opinion, if council were to say move forward with Phase One, you're saying that we could financially carry Phase One of a Civic Center, and you put the Justice Center, and still have a cushion for a project that, who knows, or a down economy, you're saying that we can make that happen?
Okay. Any other questions? All right, go ahead.
All right. So, the next is the Huron Street and the Four Mills. Typically, for road projects, we've kind of done a pay-as-you-go approach. We talked about Huron North is kind of a federally funded project, as well as some reserve funds to pay as you go. East 112th, we used the Four Mills to pay for that project, and that was definitely a pay-as-you-go, accumulate the reserves, and then you pay. Currently, the Four Mills doesn't have a fund balance available, and so, any future road projects, we really tried to take a look at, you know, what that annual revenue of $1 million could do for projects now, rather than waiting to accumulate funds, because we would be five to six years away from having $5 or $6 million available to do any kind of substantial road project. So, road projects typically require some general obligation bonds, so that would require voter approval. The Four Mills, the $1 million that's generated from that, generate, would allow us, you know, to issue bonds for about $15 million over a 25-year period. Again, we've talked about, you know, that the Four Mills expires, or sunsets, I guess, at the end of 2019. So, we're kind of making the recommendation that as we do some capital planning and look into the future that we, you know, go forward in 2017 and ask the voters to extend that tax. I think that the Four Mills was added, and I know that I'm going to get the years wrong, around 28 years ago. And it's been extended every decade, so I guess this would be the third go-around in 2019. So, it has a history of, you know, providing to the city, and it's been extended a few times. So, our recommendation would be to eliminate the sunset provision, because in order to go issue that for a 25, you know, for a $15 million over a 25-year period, you'd have to have that revenue, you know, coming in. So, you couldn't say, well, we'll extend the tax for 10 years, and then voters will say, well, your money runs out in 10. So, it's kind of a, it'd be a needed thing to do. So, on this project, we also took a close look at what we're doing throughout the city for other transportation projects. We've got the Adams Company Transportation Tax that comes in, that generates about $800,000 a year. Historically, we've been running about $400,000 to $500,000 of that being spent annually on a residential street program. And we're probably, we're going to make the recommendation in the budget process to increase that to more like $750,000 to $800,000, to kind of increase, almost double the impact that those funds have on the community for the residential street program. We think that that's a good investment. Some of the risks associated with the road reconstruction, you know, bond issue would be obviously that voters would need to extend the tax. If we weren't able to successfully do that, you know, we would have to kind of save money until we have enough funds to do some major projects. Huron is the one that we're speaking of currently, but it kind of goes for any of the road projects. And then, of course, the longer that we wait, the more expensive that will be down the road. So, kind of the same impacts involved. So, I think our desire was to get some feedback on, you know, eliminating the sunset provision as we moved the Four Mills question forward, which has already been identified as something that you guys, you've asked us to do. And then, if you agree with the idea of, you know, going out and issuing general obligation bonds, not this year, but just as part of the plan for how we would fund and finance road projects.
Can you explain how it pushes the project back by 15 years?
So, right now, at Four Mills, we've spent all the money that we had built up for East 112th. So, it has $0 in reserve of that property, of that Four Mills, generates about $1 million. Yeah. So, we'd have to get it extended first, otherwise, it's going to generate about $2 million, and then if it expires, we would, really wouldn't have a funding source.
Yes, Kyle.
May I come here? I do have a concern, and maybe, Jim, you can go into what the repairs on Huron entail, that the estimate is $15 million. And my concern is, Jason, is it looks like we're getting around $1 million a year from this Four Mills, and we're talking about a lot of projects tonight that do need funding, and Civic Center is one of them that this funding can go towards. And it looks like this one project would tie up these funds for essentially 25 years. And so, I mean, and I appreciate you guys going and thinking outside the box with the go-bonds and trying to get things done now and leverage our money. But, at the same time, I'm having a tough time wrapping my head around tying up an entire funding source on one project on one part of Northland for the next 25 years.
Yeah. So, I think, I think part of it on the, please.
No, go ahead.
I think part of it, I think we use that as an estimate. I don't know that we know that that's exactly what needs to be done, as far as the overall costs and investment. So, we know that we've talked about Huron as a priority project, but we also wanted to take the approach of, this could be a road enhancement project, not just for the one road, because I, we saw that as well, to say, yeah, you're tying up a stretch of road for 25 years. And so, maybe if we identify what exactly needs to be done there, maybe it's less than that. The concept was just have $15 million now to apply to some road projects.
Yeah, I think the, we talked about this pretty extensively, and the $15 million is a, I don't want to say a plug number, but it's in the 2019 CIP with no identified funding source. So, what we're trying to react to, that this is a priority of council, and try to identify how we pay for it. But, 120th Avenue in front of Carl's Farm is probably also $15 million. So, right there, we have two $15 million projects and only $15 million worth of revenue. And there could be other projects that we would want to do leveraging that money. So, I think our approach is really to identify, how do we leverage the Four Mills through debt service to do one or more projects, depending on your ultimate priorities?
And I would, and this is just me personally speaking, I would just be cautious of tying up an entire funding source in just one part of our city, because I think that all of Northland pays that.
Northland pays that nose. And so, we need to make sure that, you know, all of our residents are reaping the benefits of that, of those tax dollars as well. And so, not saying that, that things don't need to be done on Huron Street, but at the same time, I think that you have to be willing to put that in different parts of the city as well.
And that, I agree with that entirely. I mean, then we, that's why we were talking about enhancing the residential street program as part of this discussion, is that we've got that ADCOT money that we can leverage, and I think Public Works probably could do $1 million or $1.5 million worth of road projects in the residential area, but we thought that this was, you know, to enhance that a little bit, try to get that money spread out citywide.
Anyone else?
Just kind of piggyback off that a little bit, that we did use the Four Mill funding to do the project of 112th, so kind of does all go to one area. But I guess you have to think more citywide, that all residents use all of the roads, hopefully, and it's just expensive to do many of these road projects. So, I'm concerned, and one of my concerns on the South Huron coming up with the 15 million, did that include the drainage issues? Were you taking that into consideration, or is that a separate project?
I believe that that did. I think, I believe that was all encompassing full...
Under the road, yes, but not all the way to batting reservoir, no.
Yeah, no, I was talking under the road.
Yeah, under the road, absolutely.
Is that an identified issue?
Yep. The other thing, real quick, before I forget, about 120th, you know, that's a regional road, and so, if we can, you know, leverage Dr. Cog, tip funding, if we can get the Adams Movers Group to participate in that, some of you may remember, a lot of jurisdictions, as far away west as Westminster, participated in the 120th Bridge over the river because of the regional impact that road had. So, there's that piece, but there's the Carl's Farm development, you know, is there some economic development reason to do a project there? Can we leverage what the developer's doing? So, there's a lot of unanswered questions about that specific road project, too.
All right. And then, the lift station A enforcement, you know, we talked about that at the meeting when we did the utility study, so I think we're all familiar with kind of the, the need for increased rates, familiar with the projects that are necessary and needed. And so, we're going to move forward with the, you know, the direction that was provided at that time on April 17th to, you know, bring that forward as far as the 2018 budget process. You know, one of the things, we have started working on, one of the pieces that was mentioned was the education piece and websites and kind of consolidating and really focusing on that education. We've been working on that and hope to have something prior to the budget discussions rolled out that will really, you know, take our utility system into a more user-friendly format for all of us, because it's very complicated, we can identify those things. One, our focus on webpage, but we'll be doing some other things as well, but we heard that, and just want to let you know that we're, we're working towards that. There's a team together that's, internal team, that's working on getting that information put together and kind of cleaning that stuff up. So, again, you know, if we choose to do nothing, we'll just delay the timing and costs of some of the regulatory requirements, operational efficiencies that we need to get to with the sewer facilities, and those are some risks that would be associated with that project. But again, there'll be more, a lot more to come during the 2018 budget discussions over the next several months regarding how we get there with user fees. I know.
You can go, didn't it?
It's perfect. No, I'm good. It was just the cap. It was that weird annoying piece that just is, the squeeze. So, on the next steps, you know, the marketplace, we talked about, you know, that's going to be an ongoing process. Obviously, there'll be more to come on that. On the civic campus, are we still on track with going out and issuing the RFP, coming back June 26th with this financing plan? I mean, we need to be comfortable with, you know, what the plan is and how we're going to pay for it. We'll still get the information on the public outreach, but just if all of those could work in sync, that would, it would be beneficial for us as we do some planning for the budget and whatnot. And then, to have that on the public outreach piece as well, you know, to identify what kind of the plan is moving forward.
Did you consider using GO bonds on the Rec Theater Senior Center project?
That would be a possibility as well.
Thinking that that's a project people buy into more than, not that they don't buy into roads, but it's been an issue for so long in my land, I just wondered if that was thought. And if you did do that, how does it delay that project? Does it delay that project? I was just wondering.
Yeah. It would delay the project in that we'd have to wait until the November election to get voter approval.
If they did it this year and still puts it on the ballot with the Four Mills, okay. All right. I was just curious if you had discussed that issue.
Well, and I would clarify, we're, even if we did GO bonds, we wouldn't be issuing those this year for the Rec Center. We'd want to get the, the demand side of the equation, if you will, find out what the community wants. And so, it'd be, if we did, it'd be 2018, 2019 probably before we would issue those, because we want to have a design as well.
And then, on the, on Huron, or even just the road reconstruction, the Four Mills extension, we've had the conversation about, you know, taking that forward. Are we okay with removing any future expiration? Is that something you guys want more discussion of, or? Okay? Okay? We'll work on that. And then, on the last piece, we'll continue to work and talk about utilities throughout the budget process, so.
To be clear, the sunset is a 10-year?
On the Four Mills?
Right.
Yeah, that's how it has been for the last few years, and so, yeah, it's set to expire in 2019.
And that would be a vote, to remove the sunset. Because 10 years is a long time.
And you know, we, every, every 10 years, we extend it, and after 10 years, so...
One of the arguments was, on the last time we did it, my constituency was, you know, this never expires, now we're stuck. At least 10 years from now, they have a choice.
Well, just put it to a vote.
They're going to vote on if there's an extension or not, or if you do away with the 10 years.
They're voting on it anyhow, so if we remove that, that, the sunset clause, so that we can use it as a form of, for funding, right?
Right.
They're going to give that, they're going to vote on that anyhow when it goes up, because they have to vote on the measure. And they're not going to vote twice, they're not going to vote once for the measure and once for a sunset or a non-sunset.
Right. But if you exclude it...
They can vote no.
Right. No, if they exclude it, if you don't include it...
They're voting for a 10-year extension.
Right. Not voting for a lifetime extension.
Oh, yeah, understood.
Well, the question that we would be proposing, assuming there's some consensus, is to extend the Four Mills in perpetuity. And so, that would either be up or down, and if it's down, then it expires in 2019. And we could go back again and ask again with the same question, or with a 10-year limit, or a 20-year limit, or we could ask again.
That makes more sense to me.
Yeah, that's why we want to do it this year, because we've got two shots basically at it.
So, you're for doing it like indefinitely?
No.
You're saying if it's up?
So, the question that would be put on the ballot in 2017 would be...
The wording is very important.
Absolutely. So, so the first, the first line of it will meet the Tabor requirement, which will say, without increasing taxes, because it's not a tax increase, it's an extension. And so, we'd be asking for a permanent extension of the Four Mills. And if the voters turn that down, then the current Four Mill tax expires in 2019. So, you could ask the question again in 18 and 19, or ask a different question in 18 and 19, depending on the outcome this year.
And correct me if I'm wrong, does it, and always the ballot language includes the former, how many years it's been passed in the past? Does it mention it was passed 10 years, blah, 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 blah? So, it says how many times?
It has in the past.
I think you put that in there.
So, it kind of clarifies for the people that it's been passed so many times in the past?
No, I, I understand that, but I mean, you know, I can't predict what's going to happen tomorrow, even less 10 years from now.
I think the challenge we're identifying tonight is that if we have a 10-year limit on it, and it expires, say, in 2029, then we can only count on 10 years of revenue for financing. And if we have a 25-year financing plan to get $15 million right now, today, we will not be able to issue GO bonds or any kind of debt, because no bond underwriter would approve that, because the revenue would expire in 10 years.
Yeah, I understand, I understand that, too. We're not going to have a buy-in from the community before the November ballot, are we? On this 62 million, the dollars that are going to be spent?
Doesn't, it's not, has nothing to do with the $62 million here. This is for roads.
Right.
Right.
This is for roads, like...
Roads, that's it.
The purpose of the Four Mills, we're not proposing to change, it would still be limited to road construction or road reconstruction.
Any other questions?
Sleep on it, as they say. I mean, we had a lot of pushback, more for, over, verity.
Right.
Taking the sunset off, people like the sunset, it gives you a sense of security whether they're going to be here 10 years from now or not, if they're 70, they're not going to be here, but they still feel like...
Yeah, I, I understand entirely what you're saying. I guess, I would reiterate that if, if we kept the sunset provision, then we're in a pay-as-you-go situation with that revenue. So, we can still get the million dollars a year, and we can still fund projects, but it's going to be pay-as-you-go, because we won't be able to leverage it to issue debt and do big projects earlier.
Okay. Well, and I understand that there is a comfort level, but if we educate the citizens and let them know why we're doing these things, that's important also.
That's always the key, is educating.
Right.
Well, and Kyle brought up a great point, that, you know, if we can demonstrate how we're going to use the funds, we can, we can talk about the 112th project, but if we're talking about how we're going to invest that throughout the community, that's, that's a lot easier sell than maybe just putting it on Huron Street. That's for sure.
Well, that's, that was, I'm not trying to get into other people's business, that's what Adams Club did the last time they ran the bond, is they just ran the bond and didn't tell people how they were going to spend it. They said, we need these things, and it didn't pass. This time, they went out and said, we're going to spend X dollars on this school, this school, this school, and that school, and it passed.
And, and there's a distinction there, too, of ballot language versus campaign, because you wouldn't want to restrict yourself in the ballot language that much, but you definitely could do that as part of the campaign to explain to people what you're going to spend the money on, absolutely.
Anyone else?
Nobody likes a blank check.
That's right.
Food for thought. All right. All right. So, did Jason, anything else?
You can drop one off.
Yeah, no, I think we'll move, press ahead with what we recommended and...
All right, then.
So, you'll see the, the community engagement contract, June 26th is our target. And then, we were talking just this morning that we'll be back, you know, again after that, probably 60 days from now, with more details on this, this plan and, and on the other projects as we keep moving forward.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
I think you've got a couple things you wanted to add tonight?
Yeah, just, just real quick, the, thank you, Jason. The, first of all, the candlelight vigil, the decision was made by the police department to move that indoors, there's some very inclement weather, potentially snow on Thursday. So, it's going to be at Crossroads Church, 53 East, 128th Avenue in Thornton, so it's their Thornton campus. Again, same time, 7 o'clock, arrive at 6:30, that type of thing. But we did make that, that call this morning. The second one was related to the Denver National Western Stock Show complex, and we've received an offer from Michael Sapp and, and maybe even Kelly Lee, who's leading that project for Denver. They're willing to come and present to city council in either a, a study session or a regular meeting in the spirit of regionalism to explain what they're doing. And so, I wanted to throw that out, if you wanted them to come and do that, what format you would like, or if you're not interested in that, so.
I, I personally would love to hear from them, and I would love to hear the plans on connecting the inline to Union Station as well.
Yeah.
To make sure that that, that connection takes place, like, could have been promised to our, to our listeners, so.
Absolutely. Do you, would you prefer a study session or a regular meeting for that?
I think a study session.
A study?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because otherwise, it's only five minutes, 10 minutes, and...
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
And it's awkward to have a discussion item there at the podium for half an hour.
Right.
Okay. All right. I'll follow up on that one. And then, the last one was Mr. Todd Mitchum, I think all of you received an email, he came to a council meeting some time ago. He's the government relations person for Green Solutions, and he was advocating for extending marijuana hours, marijuana center hours. Now, we also heard some comments that same night from a different government relations person, Mr. Morgan from Be Good, that was opposed to that. So, I just wanted to see if you wanted to have a, a study session on that, or if you were not interested at all about having that discussion, and we can get that scheduled. And I'll get back to Mr. Mitchum and let him know.
Okay. I don't have a sense either way, so I don't know what's everybody else thinking.
I wouldn't mind having a study, but it's certainly no guarantee to him that we're going to pass it. And he does seem to be on it, like he wants an answer from council, the way the email he worded, so...
He's been calling, too, so...
Yeah. I mean, I guess you discuss it and have the definitive answer. That would be what I would say.
I agree. I think it definitely deserves conversation, with Denver bumping their hours up, and Boulder also bumped their hours off. And each of these plans that we look at, you know, no matter how we feel individually or as a group about marijuana, right? Each of these projects, we are looking at a percentage of the tax increase or the taxes from marijuana. So, we really, we do need to talk about being competitive with our neighboring cities to steal their business, so that we can still continue to get our profits, borrow their business.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll, I'll work with...
Be competitive, right?
I'll work with Mr. Hoffman, of course, Ms. Small, as the licensing person, to, we'll get that scheduled, and we'll have some information for you. And I'll respond to Mr. Mitchum, and, because he contacted me after he contacted you, and I'll let him know that we'll, we'll get that scheduled, and that he can come and sit in the audience and listen.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate it.
Okay.
In fact, I invited him today when I talked to him, I said, you can come, you can't speak, you can come. And he decided to, too.
Okay. That was it for tonight.
All right. Thank you. Anything else? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.